Good evening and welcome to the June 10th Town of Proctor Select Board Meeting. If you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is to review and approve the agenda. A motion would be in order.
Motion to approve. Can we have a discussion on it once we get a second?
Sure.
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
There's one item I'd like to bring up, and that's the bus board of commissioners alternate rep appointment. I don't know if that has to be brought up because it's going to require a motion to make that appointment. If, can that be brought up under new business or does that have to be a?
We can talk about it under new business, but since it's not warned, it's just under discussion.
Yeah. We wouldn't be able to take action until the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll just put it, bus board representative alternate under new business.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other changes, additions, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion will be in order for the May 28th Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second? Any changes, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. John, you have anything for us?
Yes.
Okay.
We spend a lot of time mowing here, I noticed that. We're mowing, mowing, mowing. All right? The lawns and stuff. And we're mowing beyond the right of way, so I can tell you that right now. We already checked in a couple. And another thing, we have potholes in this town all over the place. And we had some beautiful days to do it and put hot mix down, and it wasn't not even touched. Blacktop is very expensive to put down today. And what you're doing is, the whole thing is shrinking. They're getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I just don't want to see us come out with a bomb to do a lot of paving because that's going to kill us.
Can you specifically?
I would like to see these potholes taken care of. Some of them have been here three years and haven't been touched.
John, could you just tell us specifically where the potholes are that you're talking about?
The potholes are all over here by the, by Old Mary, by the manhole. The manhole covers this pothole right next door. That's an issue. That's a very, very important issue to make sure water don't get into the manholes. We got storm drains. There's holes there next door. The storm drains haven't been touched. We got leaves in my storm drains. We got grass growing in them. I'm not here to pick on anybody, but you know, that's our indoor structure and it should be maintained.
Well, I think.
We only got 20 miles a row, 22 miles a row.
Okay.
And it's not very hard. When you have beautiful days, like we had 90 degrees weather, 80 degrees, that's the time to do these potholes. But you use hot mix.
And where are the, where are the particular specific?
We got about 10 of the pockets extension. You go down on Old B Avenue.
John, I didn't finish my sentence before you are answering, which is not my question, that we are mowing outside of the right of way. Where is that happening at?
Going out right out of town. The telephone poles are on the right of way. Going right out of town. It's on Old Route 3. You're way beyond the right of way.
What, that little triangle area there?
The whole area. The telephone poles are on the right of way. That's where we put it. Every time we set a pole, we put it on the right of way. That's still on. And down by Goran Bridge, the cover bridge, we're mowing the whole thing. The town owns the whole thing?
Yes.
No, they don't, Bruce. I looked into it.
We've been mowing Goran Bridge for years now.
That is the point. The point is the fine tax dollars. I don't want to listen to her, please.
I don't care. I'm not going to tolerate this from you towards the town manager because it's disrespectful and rude.
No, no.
Yes.
I called her and she said it was.
We're not going to get into that.
Okay, fine.
And the person, and the personalities.
Thank you for your time.
Well, you don't get to come.
Thank you for your time.
John, you don't get to come and attack people and have, with personalities and things like that. If you want to talk about what's going on, great, thank you.
But I just want to voice my opinion. Thank you.
All right. The bills have gone down. Everyone's had an opportunity to sign. We're going to move the fire department down a little bit because of the fire in Pittsburgh. The guys, when they cut, are going to try to come back, so let's just, yeah. Maybe they don't, but we'll just move it down in hopes that they can. The Vermont childcare contribution, what would that be for the town?
So, we went through it and the decision was made to have the town cover the total cost and not have the employees pay any part of it. It's only a .44%. So, I think when you tally that out based on all the wages, the yearly wages that we have currently right now, the total came out to, I believe, $1,353. She has another figure here, 1,804, but that's, it wouldn't be any more than that. And even if you calculate it in, all, like, all of you would be covered. All the committee members, anybody who's paid through the town.
Right.
The summer people, the rink and stuff. But even that wouldn't be enough to bump it up twice that much.
It wouldn't be over 1,800 then?
No.
Okay. All right. Any questions about that? So that takes effect July 1. Okay. And sheriff department contract? Kind of surprised they're not here to talk about it.
Yep, so I got their contract in the mail and he may not have even realized it was going on the agenda, but since I got it and it was through July 1, it's up 10%, I believe the wages were.
Wow.
And that's pretty much the only.
So what is the total cost of the contract then?
It doesn't have the total cost. It would have to be based on the hours.
Can I ask a question, Judy?
Yeah.
On that item two, what's that number there? The fee for said services, you know, will be at 48.51 per hour billed bi-monthly capped at $100,900.
Okay, so that, that's the max of the total contract? So that's the billing per hour that they're charging?
Yeah. Okay.
I also had a question. You're good for?
Yeah.
On item two, it also says the town will be billed for annual leave and training hours at the established hourly rate, not to exceed 40 hours. Another section two that it said it would cover with somebody else. So you're paying double. So what is the training, what is that exactly that they're?
When they have to go for training for certification purposes.
They repay them to do that?
Yeah, that's always been in the contract.
In the past. Okay.
And then if we need somebody on duty and they're not available to be here because of training, then we pay an officer to be here.
Okay. Well, I just, I thought it was a little unusual that we're paying them to, for their training.
It's part of the whole contract and it, it was put into it when we first started having the sheriff's department here.
Okay.
So it was what, 98? That was something.
Last year?
Year 92, something like that.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah.
It used to, the number used to be in the contract.
Well, they have it right here. That's total, the 100,000.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm trying, I should have pulled the budget to see, but I think we budgeted definitely for that.
For the 100?
For a bump up, I think.
Yeah, I'll work on it. It's hard to see when we're in line.
Yeah.
So just, just.
Ring a bell?
Yeah.
No, I was just going to say, you know, to Jay's point in that we've had that, you know, when they give us the bi-monthly report and we've read it in the past in our meetings, we brought up that question about, you know, why are we being billed for the training?
Right.
You know, and it was in the contract. So it's been brought up and yes.
It's been talked about.
And it's good to see, yes, it's been talked about and it's good to see a contract and see that it is in there.
Right.
You know, that is covered. And the other thing that in past discussions that has been brought up is why we are paying for vehicle repair.
We budgeted 110,000.
You know, before the shift even starts from changing tires to, well, in, in item number one, it's nice to see that per the contract, they're going to provide an equipped police vehicle for the purpose of satisfying general law enforcement to meet the needs of animal control, cruelty, neglect, needs within the town. So they're going to provide a fully equipped, functional cruiser. You know, so we shouldn't see in our monthly, our bi-monthly report that they're changing tires and doing equipment repairs and we're being billed for it.
So we budgeted 110,000 in the budget beginning July 1.
Yeah.
Do you want to take action on this this evening? Do you want to wait till the next meeting? Do you have questions that you want the sheriff to come and answer?
No, I don't think so. I must say.
I don't have any.
Okay.
Let's get it over with.
Budgeted.
Budgeted. Pushing there.
Instead of waiting to the end. Cause I think it's crazy.
Do you want to make a motion to approve the FY 25 or the July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, Rattling County Sheriff's Department contract? Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So I'm going to pass the contract around free to sign, so everyone signs it and. The next one is our percentage of fines that we receive from Rattling County.
So I pulled the, Mary pulled a report off for me for what we received in, for July 21st of 2023 to middle of May, well, almost the end of May of this year, we received $2,173. So the only way we know how much that they collected is to go through every report, sheriff's report. So I pulled every sheriff's report for those timeframes.
Yeah.
And they're giving us 20% of their proceeds from the tickets and fines.
A lot of the rest of it goes to the court in White River.
Just one question on the contract. Can one of us sign up here and then the other one sign over here?
I think I suppose, I might sign there, then all the select board.
Well, there's what, one, two, three, four lines?
Right.
Does it matter where?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's on the page.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right. Rattling Regional Planning Commission Commissioner Appointment.
So I put this on because I just received this prior to finalizing the agenda and they were looking for membership for July 2024 to June 30, 2025. And currently I'm on it and I'm the only one on it. And it's just sometime it'd be nice to have an alternate or even someone else other than myself as the main member to go. You know, whether it's somebody from the select board, the planning commission, or something that they could just kind of, you know, get like involved in it, get the information and feedback brought back to us, so.
When do they meet?
They meet once a month and it's a third Tuesday, I think it is.
And what time?
Seven o'clock.
Okay. Is there anybody, and can you join virtually?
You can. Virtually or in person?
Is there anyone here that's interested in joining that? Or we could ask the planning commission if there's some?
I would think that would be nice to have, you know, a member of the planning commission if they would.
Well, we need two. We should have one and an alternate, so.
Oh, you're not one?
Well, I'm just seeing if somebody else wants to be on it. Most town managers aren't on it.
Oh.
Well, why don't we send it out to them and see if there are two people there and, or see who's interested and then bring it back?
Even if they were the member and I was the alternate?
Yeah.
That would.
Sure. So let's ask them, have them put it on their agenda for discussion item.
Yeah, let's see what they come back with.
And they've already met this month though, right?
Ah, yes.
So this wouldn't be till their July meeting?
Yeah. And I could even email them at least just to see if there's any interest, you know?
Yeah, maybe send that to their chair and then.
So see, I have the Beaver Pond ordinance.
Do you have one that's marked up?
Yep.
Nobody else does.
I don't know. I can make copies.
So I, I did do all the markups for Beaver Pond ordinance and then we thought maybe it would be better to send it to their committee, let them look at it and then bring it back to us for the first meeting in July once their committee has looked at it. Is that okay?
I, no, I agree wholeheartedly. We ask committees for engagement and this way here, we do get their engagement.
Okay. And there's really nothing that is, when we talked here, that's, nothing's changing the intent, so to speak. It's really just cleaning it up. And actually Judy and I found one that, the one we looked at here wasn't even the most current. There was another one and the only difference was on the back of it, they had added at some point that you can have ice shanties, but you had to remove them every day. And so, I mean, left that on there.
Right.
Didn't remove that or anything. But we'll send it to them, let them review it, see what kind of feedback they have and then go from there at the, our first July meeting. All right. A motion would be in order at 6:17 to move into the Board of Water Commissioners.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Judy?
Okay, so I didn't print this report out because it's kind of long and, but I wanted to give you a total number. So it's not, it's not a nice number. But the amount of delinquencies we have in water and sewer, and she has it broken up because there's three properties that are on a different, they're like, to be added into this one. But the total is 100, this is water and sewer, $129,322 and that's over 120 days old. And then there's an additional 6,148 to add to that for three, two other, well, three other properties, two other owners.
And those are over 120 days also?
Yes, but those were different because those, that amount wasn't being charged interest because it was so old.
Gotcha.
So.
Oh, it was before we moved that? Wow, that is old then, right?
Yeah. So it's, it's not a good number, but I am, let me just try to find my other.
So have everyone, are people staying current on their agreements or are we back to?
Well, the thing, so, so far I've sent out 35 letters for shut offs. The first group that I had sent out, almost all of them came back and paid.
Yeah.
The only ones that didn't are ones that we can't shut off because there's tenants in there. One, I believe, is in the process of going through a foreclosure, so that might take care of that then. Next group, I still have outstanding, let's see, there is one, two, three, four, five, six, eight. Of the last batch I just sent out, there's eight who have not responded back with anything and they're due to be shut off June 29th. So if we don't get payments, there's others who have come in and paid but not done an agreement. They just go downstairs, pay and leave.
So how does that work if you're delinquent?
I sent them letters saying, I sent you an agreement or a notice of disconnect. You came in and paid, but you have to have an agreement in place or we can shut your water off without further notice. So I've sent those few that did pay another letter stating that and I sent an agreement with the, with the figures. So hopefully they'll come in and sign the agreements. We've had some who've come in and paid just because word of mouth, the guys out there looking for curb stops. So they've, they've come in and, and paid on their accounts. Couple have paid in full, the full delinquency amount. So, yeah, but and I, what I'm doing is, and I can, I can make a copy of this for everybody if you want, or I can pass this around just so you can see it. Because what I'm doing is putting how much they paid and what the date so that I'm constantly aware that they did pay April, May, June, July. Because if there's a month and they haven't paid, then they can go shut the water off.
So what happens, let's say, I, I've come in, I'm delinquent and you sent me the agreement. I came in and I paid, but I didn't sign that. So in July, if they don't come in and pay anytime in July?
Well, through July, we're trying to make it so it's, like, say like the ones who paid in May?
Yeah.
Give them to June 30th to pay their next payment.
Yeah, but I'm just saying if they haven't signed an agreement, what's compelling them to come in and pay every month? And do we have to send them a letter every month?
No.
Okay.
The thing is, if you read the shut off notice, it says you have to come in and fill out an agreement.
Okay.
Some people have requested agreements. I've mailed them, they haven't mailed them back.
Okay.
Or they've come in and paid, didn't bring the agreement. So I sent a letter saying, you agreed to an agreement or here is an agreement, you need to sign this agreement to make it legit so that even though you've paid, once you miss, it's going to be shut off, no notice given, so.
And so when they sign that, does it have on the agreement that you're paying July 15th or does it say a payment is due in July? So do I have till the 31st to pay?
Well, mine originally was saying the first of the month.
Yeah.
So, but downstairs they said it'd be better if you just let them pay through the month.
Okay, okay.
Because lots of times if people, people live paycheck to paycheck, the first comes, they don't get paid till the 10th.
Right.
They don't, you know, so.
Yeah.
But there's been a couple that have been bigger ones that have, you know, they, they've pushed and they found money and they've come through and stuff, so.
All right. So, I mean, it is a big number, but it's, what are you going to do? It is what it is. I think we're trying to attack it, right?
Well, there's no new, is there new names popping up anywhere or is it always the?
Doesn't seem like it's the same kind of group.
Well, it's hard because like right now there's people calling because they're delinquent and I haven't even gotten to them yet because I have the first top 35, you know, and they're number 37.
Yeah.
So, because there's a lot that all owe exact, almost exact same amount, you know? It's like a year and a half they owe. So, but it seems to be, I would say it seems to be more, some new people, even maybe new homeowners.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, and so if you're a year and a half behind July, you're first, you're going to be?
And new bills go out July 1st.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Okay, well, hopefully people are, you know, going to come and try to pay something, so. Because you don't want to have to shut people off. That's a horrible thing for the guys to have to do and it's just cruddy all the way around.
It is.
All right. You have a plan for charging?
Well, I wanted to bring that up because when I read the ordinance on the charging for the pools, it says for the initial fill-up.
Yeah.
There's no way of knowing which pools are the initial fill-up.
Yeah.
You know, are they just capping it off each year?
Yeah.
Do they, the only way to know is if all of a sudden someone's got a brand new pool that was never there before and you go, oh, okay, they're filling it up now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think it needs to, I think the best way to approach it is either if you want to do a one-time fill-up, do it. If not, just, you know?
It's going to be hard to capture it, I think.
Yeah, unless you do go to a permitting system where if you put a pool in, you know, I mean, even an in-ground pool, you should have a permit for that.
You do have to, you do have to have a permit for that.
So, and I mean, that's no, I mean, I know you're altering your property to do that, but I think just having a permit for an above ground would help us keep track of how many pools are out there.
Yeah.
And who has them.
All right, so that would be a conversation for the planning commission?
Right.
Okay. Unless someone wants to drive around and be on pool patrol.
Well, there's going to be a lot of discussion on that, I think, that, you know, as far as the $100 fee, just the whether that's.
Right.
Married it or not. If it's, like you said, if it's a new pool and it's, you know, needs to be filled initially, then maybe that's a $100 fee to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
Every year is.
No, I think it would be, and maybe it needs to say that one time, you know? To me, initial means the first time.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
And I think from what I hear, most people do just lower it a little. I know somebody who does empty it completely, but.
It probably depends on the pool because I think you need the water in it to kind of keep the stability. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Other business? We do have to set the rate for water and wastewater, so I think we'll probably have that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
And Judy will kind of work on looking at residential numbers, business numbers, and then looking at the budget to, you know, so the number should, we should be basically covering a good portion of the budget from our user fees, so. And then look at what that number is and talk about that at the next meeting. And we'll do that for wastewater also, so. If there's nothing for wastewater, I don't think we need, do we need to go into it?
No.
Okay. So does that work for everybody?
Sure.
Okay. And then, Celia, I, I don't know. Like, I have a feeling Celia may have to wait because they, the governor vetoed the yield bill, so I'm not sure how you're setting the.
Tax rate.
Tax rate without the yield bill for the school. So maybe if, if they don't overturn the veto, maybe she'll be able to provide some information for the June meeting. All right. All right. A motion would be in order to move out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the regular board meeting at 6:27.
Motion to make that move?
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So you have the sheriff's report. Any questions, comments, anything outstanding in that? All right. Town manager report?
All right. Um, let's see. I sent out the advertisement for pre-construction, for the bids for paving and I sent it to five construction companies as well, all the information. And it was put in the weekend paper Friday, Saturday for bids to do, be due by July 8th at 4:00 PM and then voted on that board meeting.
And then just for clarification or just for information, the one particular area that Mr. Jawzwick was speaking about here on Main Street.
Is part of that paving.
Is part of that paving, so.
So that's why they're not, they did patch potholes up there.
Yeah.
But they're not putting a lot of time and effort into it if it's going to be all paved over.
Yeah.
And they're working on more, instead of pothole, just like patching, they're doing more large areas that have really, you know?
Degraded.
Yeah, degraded and stuff and working on filling those in and taking care of those, so.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. The pre-construction meeting was held on the 30th of May. The project for South Street sidewalks was to begin June 24th. So we had to go through all kinds of, it's amazing the hoops you have to jump through. Ricky Reed wanted to use staging down at the garage, you know, his stuff down there while he was working on the project. And I had to fill a form out for the state to say that we allow them to do it, that we, and you had to answer all kinds of questions about whether it was in a flood zone, whether it was this or that. So it's that definitely a lot of work when you're getting a. It's that definitely a lot of work when you're getting a grant through the state.
Sure.
Just doing a project, so, but um, everyone seems to be on board and it seems like a good team that's working together, so. Um, I received a letter from Senator Welch's office denying our application for congressional spending money for the lagoons that I had asked for. Um, he said that he had over 225 applicants, so it was very hard to make, you know, decisions, but to look into other federal funding, so I reached out to his office today and said I wanted a list of all those people that he approved.
Yeah.
And um, it's just, it's mind boggling. I mean, some of the projects that were approved are just.
For example?
So streamlined in just in one direction like everything else is today. Um, so up in um, Kingdom Bike Trails, they wanna make that their home and make the trails cause it's the most widely used mountain biking trail, and he gave them 6.3 million dollars for that.
Holy could Jesus.
Oh my god.
Oh, hide.
Um, so I wrote down some of the ones that were bigger ticket items, cause there were several wastewater treatment facility plants that got one to two and a half million dollars. We were not one of them. Um, dental training for a program, I believe that was the University of Vermont, to train people for dental careers, which 4.6 million dollars, which is no guarantee someone's gonna go to school there and then stay in Vermont and be in the dental field. So I'm really not pleased. I'm writing him a letter personally, and I'm writing a letter to Bernie Sanders too. Because there were millions of dollars here and they could have at least funded us a million dollars, I would say. Um.
Well, and it's rich when you see all of his little ads about, oh god, the flooding and this and that, and, right?
I would say the majority of money went to um, oh, Killington got a half a million to do new ski and sport programs.
Gee.
Um.
And they're probably complaining that's all they got.
Right. Yep, um, legal aid got 1.4 million to assist low-income um, housing or people who are homeless. Um, so I found that everything, a lot of the money was poured into the housing arena. Um, homes and, you know, addiction houses to help people on rehab, and food-related items like feeding people throughout the state.
I wonder if some of this funding was based on uh, population figures?
Like how many people it would serve?
Right.
I would think so, but then there's some other small towns that um, got, got some good money. Like, like Richmond wastewater treatment facility got 2.5 million dollars. Um, Burlington got, I think it was six, no, seven, 7.5 million dollars for the second floor concourse at the airport to redo it and put in jet bridges.
Do you know who, who didn't get any besides us?
Are we being singled out here? Rattleboro got, uh, what, what I think bothers me the most is like certain towns got three grants, three gives.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Did Rutland get anything?
Rutland, Rutland got 975,000 dollars for that food co-op, which they already have a $2 million grant for.
Oh, the one that they don't do anything in because they can't be in and.
Yeah, to put a new.
Yeah, cause they got $2 million a while back and I haven't seen them, I don't know, on West Street, that one?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Who you applied for, Judy?
I applied for the whole boat, cause I looked back last year and um, lot, one wastewater treatment facility upgrade got 7 million dollars.
Right.
And I figured if I, we put in for 5.5 and they give us two, that's a help.
Yeah, geez.
Unbelievable.
I mean, I understand the housing need and the crisis, but uh, small towns can't afford to survive with these big projects where it's demanded enough as by the state and how we control our lagoons and our wastewater facilities, but yet we don't get money from them.
Yes.
So.
Well, and unfortunately, the housing that's part of the housing issue isn't even just for people in Vermont, I mean.
Oh, no, I know.
So that, that's kind of the other piece, so.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, cause Middlebury got a 5.6 million for housing, for mixed income housing, and for bus storage addition, 3.8 million.
Hmm.
Gee.
Well, so did they give you a list of other grants to apply for then?
They gave me a link to one other one.
Oh, yeah.
One?
So.
That's fair.
Took a bus up there. So I'm gonna reach out to them.
Take a bus up there.
Or minivan.
Yes.
Take a bus out. And walk around the concourse on the second level at the airport.
Yes.
This is how our tax dollars exist.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see, I'll finish up quick, so Josh gonna be heard. Um, so I've been asked about removing the poles down at the youth league field that they're starting to sway, like bend.
Oh, yeah.
And they're not using it anymore, and then grading the um, first field by the snack bar.
Yeah.
Um, which I said I'm totally fine with. I'm just mentioning it to you because it would all be in-kind unless there's fill needed to put in like they do every year, the clay and stuff, then that would come out of the youth league fund.
Yeah.
But.
Just as long as whoever's doing the in-kind, you have a copy of their insurance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you do already, but, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to mention it to you guys. Um, traps are being set today for mosquitoes. They don't spray until they set traps to decide if they're trapping any mosquitoes, I guess. Um, so I've asked them, I asked them to spray the pool, cause it was gonna be open. They said they can't until they set traps. They um, said that they are going to, um, I saw it on the agenda for their next meeting, talk about um, other spraying out of the ordinary, you know, like they go through our town, if we have a special request, that's on their agenda to talk about. So I still don't have a date with spraying. I have had people complain about mosquitoes and black flies, so.
Mosquitoes, actually the mosquitoes were not bad today up at the pool. I was surprised cause I thought they were gonna be awful with the rain and then it just kind of holds them in there like that.
I think the black flies are worse, actually.
Those were bad in the beginning when we got there today, but it wasn't.
Get a cloud on them.
It, it seemed to be okay, but I, the mosquitoes are a little rough.
Right, well, I hope before concerts start up, cause they're starting June 26th, though.
So, we're coming to the end of this fiscal year. Have we expended all the mosquito money for this year?
I don't know what's in the budget. I know now we're paying more because we've become a member.
Right, right, but I mean, technically that's not till July 1st, so, yeah. I mean, I presume they weren't gonna spray, like when it's, the forecast is rainy like this, that seems like a waste to spray.
The way they bill is they bill us like.
Orderly.
Yeah, like they'll bill us for July and they'll, they bill us in September, so you don't pay till those dates.
Yeah.
So you're always being billed, you'll always be paying the total.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess that's the way to put it.
I guess, but I mean, here we are leaving this fiscal year and we haven't been sprayed since.
Right.
The fall.
Yeah.
So it's like we've paid the full amount and.
Exactly.
We only got sprayed part of the season.
Right, I know, yeah, I've called them, I've emailed them.
So that doesn't make any sense to me. I think that's problematic, and it's not our fault they haven't trapped them. I mean, that's part of their responsibility in the contract, so. You're in June, why wouldn't you have started doing that like?
I know. Bruce, do you still go to those meetings?
Yeah.
Yes, we've got one, matter of fact, on Wednesday of this week.
Yeah, cause I feel.
I think it's part of our permit with the state, they have to apply for state permit annually.
Yeah, and the state was been dragging their feet a little bit on that.
How's that help us, Albert?
There doesn't, but in that, it was say that the, you know, they, like any uh, 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 public notice has to be warned. So they post that and then they post when they're spraying, date start is going to be, and then when it's gonna end. And then maybe June 1st is the start of the spraying season, or there may be a day in May. The only problem is before they can spray, they have to justify the need. And they justify the need by sending out the live traps.
Right, I get that.
And then they capture the mosquitoes in 24-hour period, then they have to take them back to the lab, they freeze them, then they have to count all the mosquitoes and they have to identify all the mosquitoes. And the, the ones that permit you to spray, again, this is regulations that they're adhering to.
Right, but I, we're contracting with them, so that, that's all on them. As the minute they take our, our check, then that's their responsibility. You have to get a permit, you have. I mean, I get it, but that's what they took on is their little district.
Yes, yes.
So for us, if we're paying the full amount and we're only getting, we're only getting sprayed one season, cause now you haven't sprayed at all since we've come out of the winter.
We're not into the, the parameter that permits you to spray, where you get that count, you have to.
I understand that, but I'm saying we're getting the raw end here for paying the full amount. And the fiscal year's gonna end here at the end of this month. That means this fis, this past fiscal year, or the fiscal year that we're exiting, we have paid and we only got sprayed in August, September.
No, it would have been the end of last year's, or the start of last year's fiscal, or the current fiscal year, would have been July 1st.
Well, yeah, I guess July, but.
July 1st to.
So July, August, well, they have, we have.
But they don't, we don't spray, they don't spray in wintertime.
That's what I'm saying, so three months, and I wonder how many times, I'd be interested how many times they actually, that must be in the, their reports someplace, how many times we got sprayed.
Yes, yeah, I'm sure we can, we can ask.
It might be interesting to take that number and divide what we're paying.
Well, how many years have we been spraying?
Oh, five, six years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, probably at least six.
Well, we used to pay for, we used to have a contract with them for spraying. And that contract was just for those months that they sprayed. That's what we paid, 17,500.
Now we're, now we're paying more money.
Well, no, it, well, upfront, yes, yes, because it was at the March meeting uh, last year that the town voted to join the district, rather than just have a contract for spraying. They decided to join the district at a cost of 35,000. The, the cost was spread out over four years, and then addition pay, you know, their operating budget.
So that's the change.
But the, the advantage of having, being a member of the district is you have two votes at what the, the district does. You know, each municipality has two votes.
Alright, so next meeting you'll have some kind of report for us.
Yeah, will they decide then when they're gonna, do you think spray?
Hopefully the trap will.
Yes, it's gonna be when the mosquitoes say, there's enough of us, you can spray, then they will do the spraying. You know, until, until the mosquitoes tell us there's enough of them.
The mosquitoes?
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes we have, they have consulted the mosquitoes.
And the state even this year came to the district and said, you know, you have requests, you know, like we wanted to spray at the swimming pool, uh, there may be a function at somebody's uh, recreational, youth recreational area that they want sprayed, the town manager may call, and what they have to do now is set up the trap for 24 hours, get the mosquitoes, trap the mosquitoes, identify the mosquitoes, count the mosquitoes, and if you meet the threshold that uh, of 40 mosquitoes of this particular species, then we can spray. So when people call and say they're being bothered by mosquitoes, well, there's a third threshold that has to be met before they can spray.
So it must be more than one trapping location.
Yes, there's two.
There's, there's two.
There's one down by Patch Street, yeah, and uh, yeah.
Okay.
And they can also do a mosquito sweep. They can take a nap, go out there and do this for, again, it may be four minutes. It may be four minutes, but then again, you gotta identify and count the mosquitoes before.
Well, I just wish, cause I contact them, they never call me back.
They don't, well, I'll bring that up at the meeting, money.
Yeah, we, we joined, we're paying more money.
Yes.
It, it'd be nice if they at least.
Do they send, and what about the, their newsletter like that? Do they send, does the town manager receive that?
Yes, they get a copy of the minutes of the meeting, any uh, uh, notices that have to be warned.
Okay.
Uh, all that should be.
Okay, great.
Coming to the town.
If you could find out from.
Do you remember who you tried to contact, Judy, just so I can give them a number later?
Well, I called the number.
Okay.
And I got an answering machine. She said all their things are, then I called again.
Yep.
And left a message, and then I emailed someone. And then Tom was after them too, to find out for me. So.
Yeah, um.
I finally heard back from.
Will or?
Will or Jeff.
Maybe Schuman.
Yeah, Schuman.
Schuman, yeah. Okay. Could you check with Siri and see whether we did make the payments uh?
Okay, yeah, well, we did.
From, say, last July 1st.
Right, yeah, cause I got two invoices, I think, for this year, but they don't, you don't pay them yet, so.
And then you, they, they told us in the meeting that yes, Proctor will be getting invoice when, you know.
Okay.
But there was a, yeah, there was a lot of stuff that happened in the transfer to a new treasurer.
Right, I thought, I thought that, it seemed a lot, yeah, different.
Yeah, a lot of the stuff was uh, on sticky notes and stuff like this, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're, they're, this, the gal, it's uh, the new treasurer, she's.
Okay.
Pretty sharp.
Okay.
So I think we're gonna see more reports and better reports. So we'll have something after Wednesday night's meeting.
But that was no return calls and there was also no response on your email?
No, there wasn't response on one email.
Okay.
Um, okay, um, trees are planted in the park Friday. I don't know if you noticed them or not. They planted three maple trees in the park. Uh, they did an excellent job planting them. I mean, they were out there for a long time. I think because they kept hitting marble. They had a lot of banging out there, so, um, but, but they look great, and thankfully it rained, so they're watered periodically.
And those are from M R P.
Yes, Mortimer Proctor funding for those, so that they pay for all of them, so. And they look nice. I mean, they're help, they don't look like scrawny little trees, they're kind of halfway, they have leaves on them.
How many trees, Judy?
Huh?
Three?
How many? Three.
Three trees?
Yeah, yeah, right out front here, they look pretty nice.
They're sugar maples. We can tap them in a few years.
Black book on the bottom.
Get some rubber.
Gotta get some rubber to someone. Okay, the pool will be open Friday. The kids get half-day school, so they're gonna open at noon. And then their regular schedule will be Wednesday through Saturday. Um, and I think that's probably it. The sheriff's gone from the triangle, so if anybody has questions about that.
No, what if you ask who that was, and it is interesting that Saturday they can move the sign, but Friday, the sign had to stay in the road. They could add more to do with personnel than.
I was surprised he was gone today, cause I thought it was through today too, but.
Uh, yeah, what a mess that was.
Alright, so that's it.
Alright.
All I got.
So we'll go back up to the um, fire department floor.
Yes, so everybody got um, the email with the amounts for the investigation further of the flooring. And Josh, I gave you the first email from him too, without a, okay.
Definitely, I don't have enough of the mouse on there.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Here, I'll give you this. So he gives recommendate, cause I asked him about cost.
Yes.
So he said he broke it down for each individual, what it'd be there in the red. So I don't know if you have a preference or not, but it seems to me like the um, the selective demolition and patching could be start?
Well, we have to figure out just how big that void is. So we've been able to wash four trucks and there's not a lick of water on that floor, cause it's gone down through the slabs.
Okay.
Now you're not talking a couple gallons, you're talking hundreds of gallons that are just disappearing. It's not even having a chance to make it through to the floor drain, cause the floor is sinking underneath the ladder.
Okay.
What scares me right now is we have a 62,000 pound truck sitting on a floor that is hollow underneath. The engineer, when he came and looked at it, took a ball peen hammer and he figured with five blows, he could put a hole through the floor.
Yeah, he actually did put a hole in one spot. I don't know if you noticed.
A small one.
Yeah, I'm like, whoa, that's.
But this is something that has to be done correctly, cause the new truck that should be here next April is gonna ride over the ladder and it's going right next to it.
Well, the way he explained it to me when we went over there is like, he said, the thing is where he hit with the hammer could be the biggest void, like that could be, you know, it could be just two inches down and then it's solid.
So this is an ongoing issue. We've actually had to. So this is an ongoing issue, we've actually had to dig the concrete apron twice and the front asphalt twice now. This is an ongoing issue for the last fifteen to twenty years.
Has there been erosion somehow, water?
No, it was how the building was built, unfortunately. So the building that was there was initially burned, and all the rubble piled into the hole, and then they poured the slab over the top of it. Now all the materials that are underneath are decaying and rotting and disappearing, leaving the voids. Um, in fact, we've found from doing some digging, the original pore was supposed to be an eight-inch pore, and they cut it down to a five-inch pore, which doesn't help the situation.
Did you do any exploring, digging, when you pulled out the aprons?
Yes, they dug well, almost eight feet, and they pulled timbers out.
They did?
Yeah. The problem is, that may have helped along the bay floors, because some of it was going back towards the building. So, the apron out front, the concrete portions already started to settle and crack.
And when you went down eight feet, did that get you down to soil, earth?
Down to what they call gravel base, is what they can find.
I would think so.
So I mean, I'd, I'd love to actually have them come in and actually core sample each bay in a couple spots, just to figure out how big of an area we're talking. Because one of the fixes is a complete removal and rebasing of that before they re-pore it. That is huge money and huge disruption to services, because it's not a quick process, which means the fire department literally will have to relocate.
Yeah.
So basically on that sheet there, the third option he gives you is kind of more what you're looking?
Yes.
Leaning towards? Now, have you, have you approached or thought of approaching Warner Proctor Fund for this?
We can, once we figure out what the exact approach is, because at this point, it's, we're just guessing.
Right, right.
Like Judy said, we could have one bay that has a problem, and then that lessens what they have to do, or we find that everything has to come out and they have to start over.
Right.
And like you say, when it comes down to relocating, if they have to take the floor out, we can't access anything in that building.
No.
Because the main entrance goes right onto those bay floors.
Yeah.
And it's definitely, I mean, the more obvious is definitely in the north end of the building, and you can, I mean, there's a, there's a substantial dip from one bay to the next, where it's sunk.
Probably an inch and a half drop between the two slabs.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, you know, when I read these three items, they're talking about two different objectives. Number one was, you know, the radar penetrating just to see where there's voids. You know, if you know there's voids, then you find voids, well, what's the next step? Next step is you're gonna have to do some boring to find out if the problem is, you know, the organics. And that's the same thing with item two, you know, that's just, okay, we punch a hole, yes, there's a void there, but then you got, again, you gotta go to step three, so, you know, steps one and two would ultimately lead you to the next step, which is step three, so why not just start with those step three? And, and the thing is, you know, in, in the report that, uh, DuBois and King, uh, is that the man K of DuBois and King, you know, said, it was the two northern bays were the worst.
Yeah.
But by doing the exploratory boring, you could do a grid in all four bays, see if there are those organic decomposing materials, and, uh, you know, even when they do the bore hole, they can just look in the hole and say, there's a void.
Oh yeah, because then they can camera it and just go down and see, you know, just about that.
It would address all the issues, and then it may be like, maybe we only have to do bays three and four.
Yeah.
Because the two options in the DuBois and King, uh, initial report said, both options were to remove the floor.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the radar one that he was speaking about, you'd cover the entire fire station. You go through, across the whole floor. But like he said, even with that, the radar's gonna pick up there's a void, but it's not gonna tell you if it's a one-inch void or if it's a four.
Yeah, or what's below it.
If it's just hollow, so, um, but I think, like you said, doing the random test, you know, kind of at least gives you an idea that you, you find nothing in one bay, and else in the other bay is, you know, the worst.
But if they don't find any of the organics in bays one and two, well, we're good then.
Yeah.
You know, it's, yeah. Then we don't have to worry about replacing those.
We can't, you know, just pour another six or eight inches of cement on top of that, because the, then we're gonna have to replace doors.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, that also brings height issues with the ladder truck.
Yeah, and some of those trucks.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, they're tight squeeze as it is right now, so.
Wasn't that one when I joined, they just keep getting bigger and larger.
Yeah.
Well, so I said to Kyle, I said, well, can't you move the, the ladder truck over to the different bay? He said, no, we parked it here purposely, 'cause the building goes back further for the length.
That's what he was paying for, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, I'll reach back out to him and tell him that this is the step we'd like to take and.
Perfect.
Yeah, schedule with the fire department and then see what that report looks like.
All right.
Perfect.
Now you can go get some rest.
Uh, no, actually, I've got a whole truckload of equipment to clean.
Is it, I'll take care of, was it?
Uh, they just cleared about five minutes ago.
I've never seen so much smoke in a fire.
It was, uh, an eighteen fifty-one house by the looks of it, and there was just no access.
It was.
Which, which house was it?
Right next to Lothrup School, right on the corner of Pleasant Street.
Oh, Harry Kinley's old house?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
The insurance, yeah, that's right.
That was, the smoke was just, I don't know how you guys even found that, you couldn't even see, you couldn't see the house.
Yeah, it could have been the one, it could have been Tenyon's house at the other end.
Oh yeah.
There, that's gotta be the same roughly age, probably.
Yeah, I'm off to go clean.
All right, thanks, Josh.
Thanks, thanks a lot.
Okay, um, all right, old and new business, the bus board rep alternate.
Yeah, you know, when we made the appointments in March, you know, we skipped over the bus, or we didn't skip over, we currently have a lifetime membership, you know, for the rep. You know, I said I would be the alternate, and I don't mind being the alternate, and I'll be the alternate as long as need be, you know, and then once, if, if it's decided what the person, who's the lifetime member, if he's gonna pursue, you know, doing it or stop doing it, you know.
So we don't have anybody, you're the only, you're the alternate.
Okay, I'll stay as the alternate.
Okay.
You know, and I'll stay on as long as needed, you know, I just hope somebody from the public comes forward. I just hope somebody from the public comes forward and takes that position. And I think it'd be more attractive for somebody to come forward if they know they're gonna be the rep rather than the alternate.
Right.
So I'll stay on as the alternate and I'll fill in. The only thing is, just by having an alternate, they don't, it's, Proctor does not have a voting member of the bus. And Devon said that it would be nice if Proctor did have a voting member.
So as the alternate, you don't get to vote?
I'm not an alternate, because we never approved me as, again, they have a protocol in that, like with the alternate, it has to be approved by the board.
Oh, well, we can make that happen next meeting, I mean.
And for the alternate, it has to be the same thing, it has to be approved in a, in a board meeting.
Oh, I thought we did that.
I thought we did approve you.
No, I don't think we did. And then what would happen then, Judy, you've got to fill out the form that they forward.
Yeah.
And then submit my name to them as the alternate.
Oh.
And then what they will in turn do is send me a request for a short bio, and then I would submit that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that on the next, um, June agenda, appoint you and get that moving along, because that's silly to go to the meetings and not be a.
Yeah, well, I've been going, you know, it's tomorrow morning too, you know, that's the only thing, it's ten o'clock in the morning, which makes it limited for some people if they're working full-time jobs.
Sure, I think what we need to do for, um, next March maybe is, where we have places like that, is, um, put a better, put a list together, and then next to like, if it says, you know, bus representative that they meet Tuesday at ten o'clock, so people, if people are looking to join and do things, to have an idea of saying like, oh, I could do it in the morning or evening is better for me.
Yeah, right, and it's only once a month.
Yeah, and I think that's another thing, so, you know, to put all that information on there for people, like, you know, maybe we do that, I don't know, like November, something like that, and, and get it out there. So when you get ready to appoint in March, people have had time to think about it, or come and ask questions, or whatever that is, um, and if they know and they meet, you know, that it meets once a month and things like that, then people, it's easier to look at your schedules.
They could write a line with me anytime, you know, to a meeting, to see what it's about.
Well, yeah, if more people came to the meetings, they'd be more aware of all the committees that would be in it, it'd be nice to have that kind of.
But I think it does create, that would be helpful.
And, and what, by having a member, it helps Devon and the committee reach in their quorum. You know, sometimes he said he has to make sure, he's gotta reach out to the members to make sure that they have a quorum of the members to act on an issue that they would like acted upon at the meeting.
Well, I'll reach out to him tomorrow then, see, right.
And then the other thing is, are there, um, new maps for the bus? Because like, most places haven't gotten a map in a really long time here.
I can ask on, on Wednesday.
Okay.
These are the printed maps, I'm sure they're probably up to date online, you know, the route maps.
Yeah, people, people come in and want copies of them, and the map I have is old. And then I, I would be curious too, how they determine where our stops in Proctor are? 'Cause the stop on, at the intersection next to the stop sign is not the best place.
Yeah, well, I'll ask, pose those questions and get the answers.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, but it's like during inclement weather, it's awful.
Well, there's one down by the five-way.
Yeah.
But someone took the bench, there was a bench there and it's gone.
Yeah, Ray put that in, Ray Beattie.
Oh, it's gone.
No kidding.
That's it.
Didn't notice.
Let's give you a check against you, Jay.
Well, I can ask the bus if they could put a bench there then.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just curious how they created, I, I'm sure at one point the.
A stop.
It was created based on need, but it hasn't changed, and I'm thinking probably, you know.
Where's the one at the triangle? Is it right at bottom of hospital, like?
Yeah, right at the stop sign.
Yeah.
They stop right at the stop sign.
Guys, I've seen people standing there.
Yeah, and like, I mean, this time of year, I guess, is not so bad, during inclement weather, it's awful.
Oh yeah.
It's, I wouldn't wanna stand there when semis come by though, personally, I mean.
I think the problem is, uh, you're just hitting that nail on the head in that they don't have anybody to reach out to.
Yeah.
Maybe if somewhere if we posted that, these are your reps to the bus, if you have any issues, reach out to those people, let them know, because if you go to a meeting, nobody's contacted you, you don't know what to bring up.
Yeah, and I just know because I see people out there from, you know, when, at work, so. But, and, you know, and maybe that's something we, you know, you can send out a survey to our town or something that, you know, where would be the best stops or something like that.
Yeah, where, and, and the times, and, you know, the raw.
I know, like, what, there's a stop on Holden Ave, 'cause there's one guy that, but I mean, it's just, it's odd how they're.
I mean, there should be one right out here where that bench is, because.
Well, you would think someplace down here, particularly with Proctor Place.
With Proctor Place, yes, because many times I've seen them pull up in front and park with the handicap access via.
Yeah, but a lot of those people walk to the stop sign to get on it, so I think they bring them back, but it's just strange, so, I, I'm sure they, there's a primal reason, but it'd just be interesting, so. Okay, um.
One more thing I just wanna mention is Wednesday night, um, at six o'clock at the library is the meeting on the tri-town path. So, um, the engineer design firm is gonna be remote and giving a presentation on the computer, and then they gave us posters to be posted around the library and, um, like, assignments kind of for people to go around, one map's gonna show them where the route could go, one map's gonna ask what you'd like to see from the path, you know, a bike route, um, walk route, whatever. Um, another one, just, um, what do you think, you know, maybe hotspots around the area that people would like to see on this bike path? And then they're gonna leave those, we can leave them at the library or bring them back here and pick, leave them here the whole month of June, so the town can kind of have input. And that's the first meeting, and then West Rutland will have one down the road, and Pittsburgh will have one. But they're all different, each one will be at a different stage of the project, so.
It seemed like they were all having the meeting at the same time, that's not what's happening? The way the flyer looked.
Well, they can do it remote with us, like they can join Proctor's meeting remotely, but West Rutland can in Pittsburgh. Or they can come to West Rutland, or they can come to Proctor if they want.
Oh, I thought it looked like people were gonna be in West Rutland, people were gonna be.
No, they're not gonna, none of them aren't gonna be anywhere.
No, that, I mean, like, you could, I don't know, I guess the flyer was weird though, completely. Because I thought it made it look like, 'cause it just says, this is the meeting, June twelfth, and then it lists all these places, so I thought everyone was meeting on June twelfth.
Well, it, it, we're the hosts supposedly of this one, so.
Well, 'cause it says, it, it doesn't really list us as the host, 'cause see, it says you can join in-person meeting locations, but everything is in-person or remote, and it's like everyone can meet, you could go to the town office in Pittsburgh or West Rutland and, on the twelfth.
Oh, I thought they were just gonna all be remote.
So, I mean.
Well, if they're gonna be remote, they could be in Pittsburgh, but they're not gonna have these maps or any, or the project piece of it yet.
Oh, okay.
That's.
'Cause that's why I thought it was like one meeting and we're all just joining together.
Right, no, they're trying to hit each town, but trying to limit them, because we don't wanna pay for the designers to come down three times.
So that, okay.
So, if you wanna come, tell your friends.
Bring your friends and family, it'll be exciting. All right, uh, I just wanted to say that, um, we had graduation Saturday, it was a great graduation, the weather held off, and it was really nice, and, uh, it was lovely to see, there was a huge number of people that came for their fiftieth at senior banquet, it was really nice. Um, one of the, um, seventy-four graduates spoke, and he was the, um, president of his class, and, um, introduced himself to the president of this class and understood, he said, you know, you don't understand how hard it is being president of class. So they were great, they were so lovely and so appreciative, and, um, and then we celebrated the seventieth, um, anniversary of the, um, building, which was really nice. We have tons of archival, um, things out, which is so awesome that, um, we've just saved so much stuff about our kids in town, it was really nice, Albert was there. Um, lots of people showed up, uh, lots of people, um, that were receiving golden diplomas that were already in town showed up. Um, Arlen made a lovely little video that kind of captured where we, you started and where we've been all over town with schools, it was really nice. And, uh, there was a ballgame going on at the same time, so it was really nice interaction with kids and what happens, and just how fortunate we are with our schools here in Proctor and, uh, uh, Mrs. Atwood's grandson was here from, I think she said Arizona. You know, he goes to a school where there's like, you know, five hundred kids in a class, you know, like, this is like, like one wing of this building, and, and she said, you know, his mother wanted to come see the building and, you know, how great it was, you know, that she had gone to school here, so. It was really nice, it was, it was lovely to hear people sit and talk, and, you know, we had barbecue, and they hung out at the picnic table, and they had a hot dog and watched the game, and it was just, it, it was really a lovely event that, um, the school put on, and so, um, I think it's very, very nice when we can have things like that and, you know, intersect with lots of different people in town, so. Um, anything else to come before the board?
Girls play tomorrow, don't they?
Girls play tomorrow, yeah. Yes, they do. All right, uh, most will be in order to adjourn at seven oh nine.
Motion for adjourn?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.